Ladies and gentlemen, my apologies for the delay. I actually hit traffic in Ridgecrest, as odd as that sounds. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:32 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
We have four present with Ms. Breeden absent tonight.
Thank you very much. Our next item is our approval of our agenda, but our city attorney, I believe there's addition that we need to address.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, staff received a written threat of litigation, which I would like to add to tonight's agenda to the closed session. Brown Act allows addition to items to the agenda on urgency basis if the information that are basis for the item was received after the posting of the agenda, which it was, and if urgency exists to discuss the information prior to the next meeting. And in my opinion, it does, there are some dates involved in the threat, so I would like to get it in front of you as soon as possible in closed session. Based on those findings, if you feel that it would be appropriate to add it, a motion, a second, and a vote to add it to the agenda. And again, that would be a closed session item, potential litigation.
Okay.
I move that we add the closed session item.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Set it.
I have a motion, second.
We will be doing roll call all evening. Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Next item is public comment on closed session. We have now two items on our closed session. We have the pending litigation or potential litigation, as well as we have conference of legal counsel on anticipated litigation. Do I have any public comment on the closed agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and adjourn us into closed session. We'll return to regular session at 6:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order, and we'll begin our regular session by asking everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer, if you would, Lord. Thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for the opportunity you have given us to serve on this council. Lord, pray for our country, pray for upcoming elections. Let our country elect the right leadership to govern this country, Lord. Pray for the city council elections. Let there be good leadership coming forth. I pray for the troops in harm's way, protect them from malevil. At this time, Lord, we uplift Peggy into your presence. Lord, give her good health as she is going through so much, and give her the courage and the strength to bear with all the procedures she is going through, Lord, and bring her back safely. Lord, be with us as we are going to discuss issues which are relevant to this community. Let our decisions be useful and beneficial to this community, Lord. Bless each one of us here, in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, attorneys report out of closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. One reportable action was taken by the council in closed session. That was on the pending claim litigation. Council unanimously rejected the claim by Todd. Thank you.
Okay, next, City Manager Strand is a presentation on the quality of life survey results. Are you doing it, or am I assuming?
Yes. Yes, I'm doing it. There we go. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as I reported during our last meeting during the city manager comments, for the last month, we've been collecting information on a quality of life survey that the city had posted on its social media account and website. The survey was developed by our staff, Isabel and Megan and Jennifer, and the purpose of it was just to gauge what areas of quality of life are affected in this community and how that affects people's intent to stay within our community. And it had a focus on employees or people who were significant other of employees on the installation that had been there less than five years. So we had five. We tried keeping it very basic, five simple questions, and what we're hoping to do is take this information back to our committees so where we can take a look at it and either develop other surveys in the future, or at least be able to take some of this information that we received and be able to, you know, craft some public messages that will help answer some of these questions, especially from some of the thousand comments that we had during the survey. So the first question was rate the following quality of life activities in Ridgecrest from one to four, basically from poor to excellent. And as you can see, we listed a whole variety of activities, social activities to meet new people, outdoor activities, entertainment, community events, recreational programs, and then access to good internet speed. So that was the first question, and we asked the folks who took it just to rate it from one to four. And there's a description of what those were a little bit to the right. Second question was rate how important each reason is to your decision to live in Ridgecrest from one to four, one from not important to four, very important. And these areas were employment opportunities, affordable housing, cost of living, safety and security, quality of healthcare, quality of life activities, quality schools, small town feel, access to suitable shopping, and close to family and friends, and then desert environment, weather and dark skies. So we tried getting a whole broad spectrum of what we thought, you know, these areas that might be important to the citizens that live in the area. The third question was, do you or significant other work at NOS China Lake as DOD employee or contractor and had lived in Ridgecrest for less than five years? That was pretty much our focus of the survey, but we weren't going to eliminate anybody else who wanted to take it, but we were kind of focusing in that area. And the fourth question was, if yes, will the overall quality of life affect your decision to stay in the city of Ridgecrest? It was just yes or no question. Then the last one was, was the data that we had was free text was, please let us know what your thoughts are to improve the quality of life in Ridgecrest. And in that, I think we had over eighty percent of the people actually provided a written comment, anywhere from one or two sentences to four or five paragraphs. So during the month, we had 1,261 people complete the survey. Eighty-seven percent of the respondents entered a written comment. Forty-eight percent said their significant other or themselves worked at NOS China Lake and had lived in Ridgecrest for the last five years. And then eighty-eight percent of those responded that when asked if the overall quality of life would affect their decision to stay in Ridgecrest, they said yes. So top reasons to live in Ridgecrest, these are ranked as important to very important by percentage. Eighty-six percent of respondents said that employment opportunities were important to very important, eighty-four percent for affordable housing, cost of living, seventy-eight percent for safety and security, seventy-one percent for quality of healthcare. That was a, that was a little bit of a surprise for me. Seventy percent of the respondents, quality of life activities, sixty-six percent said that quality of schools was important to very important, and then fifty-five percent said the small town feel sense of community was important to very important. And the other question was rate your quality of life activities. Eighty-seven percent of respondents rated entertainment as poor to fair, with forty-nine percent rating it as poor. Seventy-nine percent rated social activities to meet new people as poor to fair, with thirty-eight percent rated as poor. Seventy-five percent rated recreation programs as poor to fair, with thirty-one percent as poor. And as you can see, a lot of this kind of falls in line with kind of what we all talk about within the community. So this is pretty much in line with what we already think we know. Seventy percent respondents rated access to good internet as poor to fair, thirty-six percent rated as poor. Sixty-one percent responded to community events as poor to fair, and then seventeen percent as poor. And there was one that was actually on the other end of the spectrum. Seventy-four percent of respondents felt outdoor activities, hiking, biking, off-roading, OHV was good to excellent. Then during the open forum questions, there were like, there were four themes that kind of came out of those written responses. Four were local economy, parks and recreation, cultural affairs, and then public health. Local economy, the theme was desire for more diverse businesses, restaurants and shopping. A lot of the comments were that they wanted more sit-down restaurants and not as much fast food. Need for entertainment options, including nightlife, bowling, music venues. And as you can see, we listed a couple of the comments here from the free text. Next theme was park and recreation. The trends in the theme were request new open community pool, need for indoor recreational activities to escape the heat, need for planned recreational activities for children and teens. And as you can see to the left, there are three comments that we listed. Next theme was cultural affairs. The trends in that theme were access to more information around community events. There were, even though we have a fairly robust social media presence in the community, there were a lot of people that didn't really know what was going on in the community. More planned community events, efforts to increase civility amongst residents. And there are three written comments that are listed to the right. Last theme, public health. The trends in this theme were better hospital care, vet and pet services being offered locally, and efforts to attract and retain healthcare facilities and staff. And there are three comments that we pulled from the free text. Okay, we'd like to thank the 1,261 individuals who participated in the survey. As you know, surveys are the best way for us to collect and analyze data in one central sortable, exportable format. So what I recommend tonight is to bring this survey back to one of the committees. I'd recommend either City Org or Quality Life to where we can kind of take a little bit deeper dive as staff and council to, you know, look further into the comments. I mean, I know we just listed twelve of the written comments, but there were over a thousand. And so I think there is some information that can be gleaned from those comments that would help the city understand where our community wants to go, where we need to improve our messaging, where we need to maybe change our services a little bit, and it's kind of a way of just take a look at the data, see what we can extraculate out of it, and then go from there. And with that, I have, I'm open to any questions.
I'm thinking, so both of those are, both of those committees you're on, a City Org makes sense because we're talking about a little bit more than just parks and rec stuff.
Yeah, healthcare is in there. Healthcare is in there and...
Well, I guess events could fall into there.
Events is in quality of life. They're both there. I mean, either one would seem appropriate. I consider it's a quality of life survey, probably push it through quality of life at least once through, maybe bring back some recommendations, additional questions.
Could always kick it to...
Make it a larger, you know, community.
Oh, you can't hear us? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry, I apologize. I wasn't speaking to the microphone. I was saying, quality of life survey probably goes to quality of life committee and then either does a town hall or something to, you know, a larger conversation, been on how that committee, you know, has reshaped at the first meeting in December. That would seem the most reasonable.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have any questions for City Manager Strand? I just want to thank our staff. I mean, again, we're fishing out communication. We're trying to get information, and this is, you know, a huge number, and thank you to the support of everyone who got it dispersed and out to the community. So we did have 1,200 survey results. It really does paint a much larger picture of what are the expectations of the citizens rather than just sometimes the insular voices we hear. Question? No, well, not so much a question, but so after we take it back to committee, after that, then we would maybe break it down and share it with the different specific segments of the community that, you know, this reflects directly on, whether it's healthcare or the schools and, you know, of course, quality of life and businesses and, you know, restaurant, you know, field and that kind of thing, but...
Yes, I mean, there were some common themes in there that could use at least some exploring by the city to see if there's anything that we can do to, you know, make them better, or at least, you know, explore it.
Yeah, I mean, some of it lands in economic development as well, so I mean...
Yeah, it does.
I guess you guys could parse it up, the parks and rec, and just kick off what you need to, to the other committees.
That's probably makes the most, makes the most sense, is take quality of life and then parse it out, because I, I mean, when you talk about economic development, I mean, the idea that outdoor activities had such a high ranking relative to what we are not doing to, you know, either facilitate a single path out of town via ATV or dirt bike, what we're doing in terms of building out bike community, you know, those types of things. There's probably a lot in there that, from an outdoor activities, that indirectly involves economic development in some ways.
All right, nothing that we're not aware of, but all things that now that it's ranked and open, I think it's a good deal all around.
Oh, yeah, it says a thousand people out of, at least a thousand people out of 1,200 people, you know, strongly feel that outdoor activities are one of our best assets, essentially.
Any other questions for City Manager Strand? Thank you, sir. We will go ahead and move on with public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council will not take, act on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name, and we'll go ahead and begin with public comments from the floor.
Billy Sears, Deputy Chief, Kern County Fire Department. For the last year, I've been your representative through the Ridgecrest. I did promote in October to Deputy Chief. I'd like to introduce you to your new representation for the Kern County Fire Department, Division Chief Kane Lindville. So Kane's, I think I'm leaving you in a better position than me. Kane has a wealth of experience as a Kern County firefighter, coming through the ranks all over Kern County. For the last year, he has been performing the fire marshal position, and so as you guys continue to grow in this community, it'd be a wealth of information when it comes to that. Other areas that he has a lot of experience is as a battalion chief throughout Kern County, a arson captain, and several other positions. So I'd like to introduce you to him and let him say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I'm happy to be here with you. I'm available. I've left my contact information with Mr. Strand. I'll leave a, if it's okay, I'll leave my card with the clerk as well, and please contact me if you have concerns, questions, or a need. I'm here for you.
Likewise for you. Please contact us if there's, if you have a need or concern.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Al Huey. I have a question for you tonight. Whatever happened to freedom and liberty? John Adams said, "A constitution of government once changed from freedom can never be restored. Liberty lost is lost forever." You know, the most common way people lose their freedoms and liberties is by thinking they don't have any. It was 246 years ago, the fifty-six brave and noble men came together and declared their independence from Great Britain, giving us our freedom and liberty. They drafted and signed our Declaration of Independence. That document concludes with these words. "And for the support of this declaration with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor." They later went on to create our Constitution, which each of you took an oath to support and defend. Today, it appears that we do not have any brave or noble men. Instead, in the Republic of California, we have what strongly resembles a Marxist state legislature, demanding quite possibly on behalf of the trash hauling lobbyists that every resident in business submit to a mandate and pay to have trash, recyclables, and organic waste picked up weekly. Gone is the freedom and liberty once held to self-haul, recycle, and compost on your own. Being forced to pay for this is nothing less than a tax. But wait, businesses are not paying for this because they pass the cost of doing business onto their customers by raising the price for goods and services. Why is our government doing this? They claim in part it's due to climate change, you know, global warming. I was not aware that man could change the weather. To make matters worse, the city is currently permitting our trash hauler to charge for a service months before ever delivering that service. This is downright dishonest and should be illegal. All of this is why elections are important. Be careful who you put in office. Now on a different subject. Apparently, our city council and most council candidates seem to believe, like President Joe Biden, that our economy is strong as hell. No, no, it's not. We're in a recession with an almost certain depression looming on the horizon. The Biden inflation tax is estimated to be costing the average American household over $800 a month, but in California, it's much higher because gas is higher, natural gas is higher, propane is higher, electricity is much higher, and water is definitely higher. And for those like myself who are retired and who have saved their entire working lives and invested in a 401K for retirement, well, we've lost over 25%. Allow me to give you an analogy. In California, we have lots of forest fires, so during fire season, if you go camping, you should not be lighting a campfire because of the high risk of starting a forest fire. What I'm trying to say is this, your timing for the Measure P tax increase could not have come at a worse time, given our dire economic climate. Former Chief John Marshall once said, "The power to tax is the power to destroy." The economic recipe is a simple one. When the economy is struggling, you cut taxes. When it's booming, you raise them. It's basic economics. Let me close with these two points. One, I'm strongly opposed to the Marxist mandatory trash recycling and organic waste climate change program. And two, I will not be voting for Measure P. I urge everyone else to get out on Election Day next Tuesday, and like Indiana Jones, choose wisely and vote no on Measure P.
Thank you, sir.
I'll start off by referencing the Brown Act California Section 549-50, which says, "If you have a discussion, you got to have public comment." So since the mayor wouldn't allow public comment on the presentation and let the council talk about it, I'm not giving my name because the clause says I don't got it, and I ain't gonna... Not real hard to figure out who I am, is it? So what we just heard about Measure P. I've already written about a four-page dissertation, which has been out around town for quite some time, proving that the city has enough money to pay for all these things that they're throwing out there in their line of propaganda to try to convince people to vote to tax themselves even more. Well, like Ms. Huey said, the degree of taxation is directly connected to your degree of slavery to the government, and I think that you're going to find over sixty percent of people in this town say no to no more taxes. They don't want more taxes. They got enough to pay for, and you got enough money, so why should they? And coming in tonight through the wind, driving past the gun shop makes me think of winds of change. Sure is going to be nice to be able to drive down China Lake Boulevard and drive past the mayor's business, guns for us, and have a new mayor because we've needed one ever since two years ago. And of course, at the same time, get a councilman who really knows something about water and appears to care for the effect of ridiculously high water costs, which in my case and everybody else's case, you pay more than twice as much for your water charge from the Water District now because of it. And then Mr. Gorman, well, he's going to give Kyle a run for his money on who can talk the longest in council, so it'll be entertaining at the least, and we'll have three new faces up here, and you just never know what might happen. And back to the trash thing, I sent all of you a letter and said, "You know what? It's contractually illegal for, you expect citizens to have to pay for a service they're not getting. You voted for some unknown reason totally beyond my comprehension to try to let Waste Management get away with charging us, just like we were getting three canned service for six months. We're not getting three canned service." So I wrote Waste Management a letter, which I sent all of you, and said, "I'm not paying for it because I didn't contract for it. I'm not contracting with you. I'm contracting with Waste Management." And so I invited all of you to figure out which one of you wants to pay that extra $30 on my last bill for Waste Management because they ain't getting it from me. When I get three cans, then I'll think about it, and I hope the rest of the people in town consider it and do the same exact thing because enriching Waste Management for no good reason off the pockets of the people of Ridgecrest is unacceptable, to say the least, and I'm being nice about it. So figure it out. Figure out how they're going to get their money. Maybe there'll be a lot more people. Now, they got three months to pay that bill, they'll say, "Hmm, why should I pay it? I'm not getting it. I'm not going to pay for it." You'll see.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I will make a comment on the trash. The city council, we went through this many years ago and promised us we wouldn't have to pay for trash service, and they fight for us. Unfortunately, city council has a bad memory and they don't do it. They're claiming the state required it. Unfortunately, the state doesn't have constitutional authority to do so. Now I'm going to get in, and as far as Measure P goes, I hope all the citizens vote against it. In California, we pay over 50% of our income in taxes. Enough is enough. The city, our government, is supposed to operate in the most economical ways necessary, not look for more ways to spend money. Each and every one of you take an oath of office to uphold and support the United States Constitution and the California State Constitution. I doubt if any of you read those recently in history. You need to read them every day. Your oath says you will. Follow it. It doesn't say you can acquiesce to what someone else says the Constitution means. You have to find it yourself. You have the ability to stand up and fight for the people. Our founding fathers put you in the most important position, the lowest possible person. That's where our government is, from the bottom up, not the top down. You can't acquiesce. You shouldn't accept what other people accept. Even the Supreme Court is not the interpreter of the Constitution. That was left to the people in the states. We need to stand up for the people's liberty and freedom. The city, our government, should stay out of it and only touch that when it's absolutely necessary. We spend a lot of money on community pools and recrea, what do you call it, quality of life. That quality of life is, should, you can't charge other people that aren't using it. You're never going to make them happy in that era. Your survey was so lucid, you could put anything you want in it. We need to say, "We want liberty." You need to say... You need to say, I have a duty to follow that Constitution. Now we have people come up here to speak to the council. We live in a great community. We have the most intelligent community in the nation when the last survey was done. But they discourage, we have engineers, physicists, chemists. We discourage them from coming up and helping the city. We'd rather spend our tax dollars hiring consultants than simply using the resources we have here in town. I don't understand that at all. Why do we not want to let the people be part of their government? In this city, they don't want to hear it. They just assume we didn't come to these meetings. I've seen it time and time again. Even at the last meeting, they very strongly discouraged people from coming here. We can disagree with council. That's our job. You work for us. You act like we work for you. You need to start tightening the budgets as much as you can and reduce the tax on the people. Do everything you can to prevent your impact on the people's liberty and freedom. Our forefathers did a great thing when they created this country. They wrote the Constitution. And when I say the Supreme Court doesn't have the authority as the interpreter of the Constitution, that was invented by the Supreme Court. The idea of precedence was not part of common law when the court was created. It wasn't created till over 100 years later by the English law. They don't have precedents. Do you know what your enforcement ability is? It's called nullification. You don't have to follow what the state legislature says, what the United States Supreme Court says. You have nullification authority. And if we don't start using that, we'll have no freedom of left for our grandchildren and grandchildren. I'm sorry if you don't think that we need to pay attention to those things, but we do. It's more important now than any time in history. We need to preserve this for our children. Look and see what the founders wanted. If we don't preserve it for our children, we are the most despicable beings on earth, and that includes myself. We have to step and do the job. I hope we get new council members up here that understand that. And I think Mr. Winnick would be a great asset as a mayor, and he understands a whole lot more on that issue than most people understand. And he's willing to listen to people. I don't know what my time is. I don't see your timer today, so... Oh, they moved it. But I just hope and pray that you understand. I mean, yeah, the legal California cities, you can go there and say, we need to fight for this. Why should I pay for trash service? I can do it myself. It's a violation of my California constitutional rights and federal constitutional rights. But no one here even wanted to have that discussion. We need to go there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Seen none from the floor, on the phones? Caller, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mary Mancini. I presently live at 802 North Fairview Street in Ridgecrest. And I'm calling to make you aware of a situation that I don't know how much you're aware of. I have to move because there's an extensive remodeling of the apartment complex I'm in. I was presently paying $575 a month. I have on a limited income. I'm 81 years old. I have no other way to go but rent. And what's happened is the rents have gone sky high. And what they're wanting is over half my income. And I cannot afford that. And they will not even consider me without like $300 more a month than I presently receive. So I have reached out for the agencies that provide help. But there's all, all of them have waiting lists. And the Housing Authority, one to two years waiting list. And so you're seeing going to have a lot of elderly and families that are homeless. And I want to just make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mancini. Is there any other public comment on the phones? Caller, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Renee Westdill. I don't know if your live streaming is working, but the TV is out. You can't get the City of Ridgecrest on TV right now.
The livestream is working.
YouTube's...
YouTube is up, but I apologize if there's something wrong with MediaCom. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
He says MediaCom is up also. I apologize if there's something that is not working properly.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seen none of the phones? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Next item is council announcements or direction. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Ms. Mancini, I don't know if you have the ability to reach out to the city. If you do, you know, I understand there's a lot of challenges with housing. We're fully aware of it. We're hoping that the Mojave View gets up as quickly as possible, which will provide some much-needed low-income housing and housing options for our community. And we're certainly hoping that comes up. But if you'd be happy to reach out to us, we'll be happy to see. Any one of us, I'm sure, would be happy to speak with you if you have either on the web or I'll give you my personal cell, which is 760-977-7090, which is published. I'm more than happy to speak with you. Any other council comments or direction? Council announcements. Start with Kyle.
Yeah, I have an announcement. I had the genuine and distinct pleasure to... I brought this up last council meeting to issue a proclamation in honor of the 60th anniversary of the Altrusa Club. And then I spent a few moments speaking and addressing the entire club. And it was a humbling experience. So many of the folks that were still serving there in the Altrusa Club had been there, some of them since the late 60s, the early, you know, the early 70s. They'd given so much of themselves to the community. It was, it was just, it was a humbling experience. And I wanted to express my gratitude to the club for allowing me to be there and make sure the public was aware of all the efforts of Altrusa, which are countless. They do a kid spree where they pay for children to go through the store and get stuff that they, you know, they're kids who've never had new things. I could go on and on and on. Anyways, it was an honor, and I wanted to make sure the public was aware.
Councilor Roger Rotnum?
If it is appropriate, I kind of want to respond to the public comments.
Absolutely.
I mean, we welcome public comment. So we always appreciate your input. We want to listen from the community. And we welcome constructive criticism. So I never wanted to talk about these things, but I have been hearing about this for a long time. And I'm not on Facebook, but people keep talking about Facebook. I don't know what is happening on the Facebook. So, but I want to make this comment because we are here because you have elected us. You have shown confidence in us that we will be doing a better job as council members for this community. So had you thought that we were not fit to be council member, you would not have voted for us. So we are trying to do our best as a council member and fulfilling the vote which we have taken to serve this community. So we, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not speaking for you, we as council members, we sacrifice our family, we sacrifice our friends, we sacrifice our time to come here and spend time and to make sure we do the best thing for this community. It's not fun for Mayor Bruin to leave his four children with his wife and come and spend long hours here. And it's not fun for Councilman Blades to leave his young daughter at home, who might be needing his attention, who might be wanting him to go see her games or do something, some activities. It's not fun for Councilmember Heyman to leave his family and grandchildren to come and spend long hours here. It's not fun for Councilwoman Peggy Breeden, in spite of her health problems, to be here all the time, spend most of her hours for this community. And it's not fun for me to leave my wife at home and not spending time with my grandson. But why we do that, we have a commitment. We don't have any personal agenda. None of us have a personal agenda. We all want to do the best thing, but the only thing is we might be thinking in different ways to achieve our goals. Ultimately, our goal is to do the best thing for this community. In addition to this, we are all responsible for our own jobs. We are head of the institutions, most of us. We run our businesses. So we spend time there. And then again, we spend time here, not just here. We spend most of the time reading whatever needs to be done. We do our homework. So we get prepared to come and make good decisions for this community. All we do this because we want to honor the vote we have taken. And nothing will deter us, and that much I can assure you. I might differ with council members on other issues, but that doesn't mean that we are not working for this community. So I just wanted to make this comment because I never talked about I does these things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Heyman?
Thank you, Councilman Roger Rotnum, as well said. I just wanted to bring up that there's a lot of events going on in the community right now. Month of October, November is pretty busy. We have the Patrick Liff Festival coming up this weekend, so come on out and enjoy it. On November 5th and 6th, this weekend again, is the 66th Annual Gem and Mineral Show. And that's going to be held out at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds. So please go out and enjoy the gem and mineral show also. It's a great place to take kids and let them see some really cool, you know, gem and mineral-type specimens that these folks that are putting it on have out on display. So anyways, that's all I have. So if anyone else has any other events, I know there's probably some other stuff coming up, but thank you.
Well, since we jumped on a couple of events, I'll jump a couple on there real quick. Let me just thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that, Solomon. Silly, silly month. Silly, silly month. So first, let me thank everyone who came out to the Desert Empire Fair. It was an incredible fair. Once again, what a symbol for what our community is growing into. The people that were out there, the number of people that are out there coming out in different shapes and sizes and people. It's wonderful to see how much our community is growing into a family-oriented community and slowly and steadily making changes in terms of what our demographics are. It's also representative in our survey results and how we're getting information. It's fantastic. At that, I got to get sandblasted for nearly five hours while I stood out at the front gate. And I will tell you, one of the best things that happened out there is again, the number of kids that I rocked into, the number of kids that I talked to that thanked us for being out there and talked about the city being on TikTok and talked about getting communication from the city and talked about how much they felt more involved in their community. You know, I had the opportunity to go to Fowler Elementary also about a week and a half ago and talk to the entire second-grade class. And it was amazing to see how excited they were to hear more about the city and what they were growing and how we were trying to build a community. It's wonderful to hear optimistic, positive voices from our children in our community. And that's what we're listening to. It's fantastic. Just today, I got to go to OPS, Opportunities for Learning, where homeschool children and children that may have had some challenges with learning, they had great comments and conversations about our community and positive looking forward to it. It's wonderful to spend our days hearing those positive communications from our citizens. It really does mean a lot. It especially helps to balance out when we hear so much of inside our public comment, great concerns for how we're handling our community. And every person has a right to their concern. I simply feel pretty good about what I'm hearing back from the entire community rather than individual voices. The other one I wanted to say is when we're talking about that vein of looking at kids, our trunk-or-treat spectacular event. I know I saw a few of the members of the crowd there. Some others were not. But it was great to see the community out there, all the volunteerism that this community puts out in favor of the children of our community, all the people that come out and serve and spend hours there. I know Mr. Ellis was out there. I don't know if Skip was, but it was great. And on top of that, that was all put together by our city staff. Our city staff continues to work very hard to build a robust set of parks and recreation activities for our communities. And let's be real clear. We didn't just fall off a turnip truck and not just spend the last two years in one of the most unprecedented pandemic periods in history in which the city enforced no vax mandates or any other actions on our community or on our officers or on our staff. We took certain precautions with our safety and our soundness in public hearings and followed those guidelines. But we continue to make sure that we protected those citizens' rights. And we did a pretty good job of it. I'm pretty proud of that track record there. But at the end of the day, our trunk-and-treat, it's the first time we've been able to be fully back in full force, and it was incredible. There was easily 2,500 people, if not more, there. There were at least those kids, the borough's cheerleaders cheering, the kids in costumes, dinosaurs, Spider-Man. Those were definitely on the top among us. But at the end of the day, thank you to our Parks and Rec Department for putting that together, just like movies in the park where we have hundreds of kids come out to city events and activities that I think are important and part of our budget. I think that when we see all those things coming together as a community, those are the things we should truly take pride in and be excited and celebrate. So thank you for all of those kind words. I do appreciate it. But not quite done. So about a month ago, a young lady reached out to me via email. And three or four months before that, somebody else had reached out to me about concerns about trash in our community. And they said, where can we really do something impactful? And you know where I pointed them? I pointed them to the back, behind Doc Heyman's building on Gold Canyon, back behind the Dart Building. And you know what they did on our lead and our support? An email, a simple phone call, communication. Hey, can we get this together? Can we get that together? You know what they went, they hauled out an entire container of trash out of our community through volunteerism, through the city coordinating that by simple, honest, reasonable communication. It's amazing what can be done when that happens. We've continued to do that. We have focused on communicating with our citizens in our community. And I'm not going to stand back and say, we are not doing a good job of that. We are. Because that's the proof that people are out there trying to come together and do good things. And when they come together, that man down there, he became my trash king, right? About a year and a half ago. There you go. Captain Trash. But you know what he did is he spurned on other conversations, the same way each of us have worked to do that for this community. Kyle, I think you were out there. Thank you again for doing such a great job with that. But more important, Sarah and the entire team at, I believe it was the Church of Latter-day Saints, correct?
It was the Church of Latter-day. There's a couple of "Ov" in there.
Of, of.
Okay, there's two "Ov". I want to make sure we state that plainly.
Perfect.
Diane did a lot of the work. Diane Wannecott did a lot of the work arranging that. And then Just Serve is the forward-facing community group that does a lot of that organization. Not just that, but Diane specifically.
They did a great job. And just want to thank you guys and for all the volunteers that came out. You know, council announcements are full of positive, wonderful things that this community is doing. And it seems like a nice balance to moving on with our meeting. Okay, next item is our consent calendar. We have five items on our consent calendar. I'll go ahead and read each. First is our proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated October 19, 2022. Number two is a grant acceptance for a grant awarded for the highway, Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Recreation Division Recreation Division with the California Department of Parks and Recreation. Three is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council authorizing acceptance of the State of California Office of Traffic Safety Step Grant. Four is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to create a Deputy City Manager Public Works Director position. Five is approval of a new five-year contract with City Manager Ron Strand. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
Item number four, please.
Item number four? Any others? No? Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled?
Sir.
Number five? So we'll begin with item number four. Item number four is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to create a Deputy City Manager Public Works Director position. Mr. Strand?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, what you have before you is a change in our position chart, adding a hybrid position, Public Works Director/Deputy City Manager. As you all know, the city or City Council has been interested in establishing a succession plan for my position, and I think that the council has looked at our current Public Works Director as a possible candidate for my seat in the future. So with the recommendation for myself and the council approving, I want to move forward with this position so I can move forward and amend the contract with Mr. Reed to make him the Deputy City Manager as well as the Public Works Director. That position, he would still obviously maintain his Public Works Administration duties with his professional engineer certificate, but then he would then work with me in basically learning my job and learning my responsibilities and roles. So in the future, we'll be in well-position to have someone take over my spot, and then obviously, over the next couple of years, we'll be looking at who do we replace the Public Works position with, and it gives us some time to fill that role. So what I have for you is obviously the change in the grade. We have to do this, obviously, per our budget as well as for the accounting procedures and through person.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, just to be clear, the item before you is approval of the position, not the employment of Mr. Reed.
That's correct. It's creating the position. That is correct. Okay? Questions?
No, I just wanted to pull it for transparency purpose. So we explained it very well, City Manager Strand. Thank you. So will it be advertised internally, or what is the process?
It will be an appointed position.
Okay. And the increase for the budget is only $24,000, not the budget actually for that position, the salary for that position?
Correct. Your cost initial $24,000 for that position, this calendar, yes.
And there is no negative impact on our budget because of this position?
No.
And we won't be hiring another Public Works Director?
No, we will not.
Not at this time at least?
No.
Okay.
No, Mr. Reed will maintain both his position as a Public Works Director and assume the duties as a Deputy City Manager.
Thank you. I wanted the public to know all these facts, so thanks for explaining.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, just to clarify, for the sake of the record and for communication, Mr. Reed had previously, there had been public record announcement of him accepting a different position. Do I have any ability to address that?
Not really. This is simply a matter before the council is approval of a position that the City Manager proposes to create in the classification chart.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, any other council comments?
No, we, this has been a discussion a long time coming. This isn't a surprise, so it's, I'm glad you're doing it. I mean, if any good manager is not planning for succession is screwing up, so I appreciate the change.
Very much so agree. Okay, any public comments?
Right at this point in history, I identify as free citizen. My pronouns are don't tread and on me, and we got past that. I had some doubts about this item on the agenda until you started talking about putting Mr. Reed in that position, who I respect him highly. I think he's one of the most responsive people on your staff that you've got, certainly far more than some others on your staff. However, thinking about this, just as far as a matter of proper hiring procedures, you're creating a position, and yet you say you want to just appoint, basically, Mr. Reed into this position. I think that's highly questionable. And of course, I know your attorney's going to cover for everything you're doing, as he always does, and he's paid to do, but I just want to make it a matter of public record that this position should be advertised and multiple persons should be able to compete for this job. If this is a new job, all of a sudden, it should not be any different than any other job that's been filled for decades down at this city hall, okay? Just because you want to keep Travis, which I'm not sure, you know, you're going to keep him because he's going to get a pretty sweet salary over at the Water District as general manager, and I don't think he's going to be making probably more than the City Manager here, so I'm not sure why he should, but anyway, at least equivalent. So, you know, to take on a double-duty job for the same money when he could just be running the show over at the Water District, and oh, by the way, since water is the most important issue in this valley and will be for some time to come, I just say to Travis, I personally would much rather you have you as the general manager of the Water District, and let Mr. Strand go fish for a Deputy City Manager and hire him from a pool of applicants.
Any other public comment on item number four? No? Okay.
On the phones.
Huh? Oh, on the phones, I'm sorry? On the phones? Caller, state your name. Okay, caller dropped. Okay. Okay, and item number five?
Mr. Neal pulled up.
Do I, do I, do I take them individually? Okay.
The items that were pulled should be acted on separately.
On individually, okay. Do I have a motion to approve item number four?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
For ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number five was pulled by the public. This is approval of a new five-year contract with City Manager Ron Strand.
And just for the record, Mayor, the law requires that we announce the new salary for the City Manager. It's a new five-year contract and an annual salary of $2,769.18. The contract files an evaluation that the City Manager received at the last meeting. The item is before you for your approval here today.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, members of the public.
Yes, once again, I'll just have fun and refuse to identify myself according to California law rights awarded to me. So awarding the five-year contract to the City Manager right before a potential change of three members on the council seems very strange kind of a thing to do, kind of a super lame-duck appointment approval. I suggest you do some kind of temporary extension of the contract and let the new council decide if they like Mr. Strand and want to keep him around. You know, there's two of you, I predict, and very likely, they're not, you're not going to be here in January. So to do something that everybody, I mean, everybody that thinks about it for just, you know, 10 seconds goes, say, what? What, you know, why are they extending the City Manager's contract? I realize myself, knowing the situation, that the contract says he serves at will, but it just looks pretty odd to be doing this at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Those of us in the back have absolutely no idea what the attorney said. We heard something, numbers, and that's all we could hear. Guys, please use your microphones a little bit more tonight. I'm having, we're having a really hard time hearing you.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Miller. So as public disclosure, we have to disclose the salary. I'll go ahead and let the attorney go ahead one more time.
All right. The proposed salary for the new five-year contract annually is $2,7,690.18.
Two oh seven, six ninety, eighteen. Any other public comment from the floor? Seen none? There's public comment on the phone? Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Renee Westall. I just have a question regarding this, I guess, the salary for the City Manager. Is it increased by 2,000-something dollars or?
The new salary is 207,690. This is his existing five-year contract had reached expiration.
Okay, so it's pretty much the same salary? Okay.
It's an increase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there's another caller on the phone?
Yeah. And I believe there's another caller on the phone?
It's me. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Ronald Porter.
Please go ahead, sir.
Placing that on the agenda as it was done is violation of the California Brown Act because the contract was not printed, and it should be out and put up for discussion where the people can read the contract, see what's in it, and have an informed discussion. With what, the way it was presented, the people can't have an informed discussion. If it was discussed somewhere else in the city, then that would be a violation of Brown Act. I can't believe that any city council had the time to read it since it wasn't included as part of the agenda. So I think they need to take this off calendar, bring it back, and discuss just the contract with the people, and then decide if they want to do it. Thank you.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, I think maybe the gentleman did not see the revised agenda. The revised agenda was posted timely way before the 72-hour period the contract is included in the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment on the phones? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, bring it back for discussions? Are there any other questions in regards to item five from the council? Here it is, our motion for approval of item number five.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
For ayes, motion carries.
With both items cleared, do I have a motion for approval of the remaining three items of the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
For ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number six. This is a discussion action item. This is discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Ground War Authority. Mr. Heyman?
Thank you, Mayor. So the GA has not met since our last city council meeting, so I do not have any new news to report on at this time. So we will be meeting next Wednesday on November 9.
Thank you, sir. Is there any council discussion?
Nope.
Nope. Is there any public comment? Okay, seen none. And there any on the phones? Nope. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on with item number seven. Item number seven is a proposed approval of an additional portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to replace the banquet hall floors at the Kermit Ghee Center. I don't see Narissa.
No, she's out to see me. I'll be taking a swing at this one.
We should make Travis do it.
Come on, Travis.
No, I think I got it.
Okay.
So as you recall, back August 3 of 2022...
We're looking forward to hearing from him for a long time, so I was just...
We weren't going to give him a speaking role tonight, but... So August 3, 2022, council approved a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Horizon Construction to replace the flooring at the Kermit Ghee Banquet Hall. While in preparation for that contract to be signed, it was discovered that the contractor had not measured the floor appropriately, so when they went back to rebid the project, it went from $76,000 to $174,000, more than doubling the original estimate. Obviously, staff took a dim view at this, and we reached out and solicited estimates from two other vendors using the source well bid process, and one company did respond. We met with them. We were able to get a quote from Bentley Flooring to replace the floor for $101,000. So what we are before you tonight is to amend or rescind, actually rescind and approve this resolution and approving the amount of $101,388.32 to Bentley Flooring to be able to sign that contract to move forward with the project. It's an increase of $25,000 over where the council had budgeted previously or approved.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll start with council comments. Obviously, this moves in line with the other projects that we're working on with Kermit Ghee. Just again, to educate the public that's not aware, Kermit Ghee is currently going to have new partitions, new flooring, a new Wi-Fi wireless infrastructure. They did carpeting in the rooms during last summer, and we are continuing to build out some of the IT and audio infrastructure within the both City Hall and Kermit Ghee in order to make Kermit Ghee a premier facility for holding events like the Chamber of Commerce Economic Outlook Conference, where we have a lot of people present, and obviously, they're all looking for the quality and appearance of the city to reflect what we are as a city. This is just one piece of that in the flooring, and it is under the ARPA plan funds. And any other statements or questions from council?
I'd just like to add to that, I believe that when they were, that Narissa solicited these other bids and contractors, that the review of the flooring, the actual picking of the floor material was reviewed also and...
Yes.
Was able to do some serious shopping and not at the extent of sacrificing the quality of the flooring, because one of the things that we were looking at on the Parks Committee was ensuring that we had longevity of the floors and that they would last long, but she was able to come up with a, you know, an equal quality flooring for a lesser dollar amount. So I think that was pretty fantastic on her part to put that work into it. So I believe she was going to bring a sample of it tonight to show us, but she's not here.
Do that here. I wanted to mention just real quickly for the rest of the council that the flooring that she is looking at is tile-based, so you are capable, unlike what we have right now, the rolled laminate that is on that floor, they can't replace the pieces of it. This would allow for the, for an individual tile that was significantly damaged to be replaced without having to go through the process of replacing the entire floor. It's a very common practice with carpeting and with flooring at this stage is to have it tile-based so you can replace or repair the individual damaged area.
So I'm guessing we have the availability of $25,000 in ARPA funds, right?
Yes, it's within the budget.
Okay. On the resolution, Mr. Strand, couple of corrections. When you go to 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth whereas, the United States Treasury has adopted the interim final rule, so we should make it as a final rule because we have the final And then last but one whereas, I mean, not that it really matters, the amount should be actually $25,138.20 instead of 32.
The second to last right here?
Yeah.
$25,138.20?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, next page, sorry. Now therefore be it resolved, there also you should change it to 25,132.20.
138.20 or 132.20?
138.20.
138.20. It's the sense. It's absolutely accurate.
Yeah, just the sense.
I, I... Yep.
It doesn't make difference, but you know, it's a resolution, so...
I can't debate one way or the other.
Solomon, you are a master. You have anything else, Solomon?
Okay.
No, no questions, just a comment. Mr. Strand, please thank Narissa for doing her due diligence and paying attention. Nothing further.
I will.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, is there any comment from the public?
Good evening, council. Once again, decline to identify. So, American Rescue Plan Act funds supposedly being sent around the country for what's termed as COVID recovery. It's been a while, but I read the act. I read the provisions.
It's not.
What's turned into is nothing but a big slush fund grabbed on by greed, by bodies such as this, because it's there, and we want the money. It makes a complete joke out of the original intent of the act itself. And as far as I'm aware, there isn't one single thing this council, this city staff is doing with this money, which is, I believe, the total of 6 million something, that has anything to do whatsoever with COVID recovery. Over 3.5 million for parks. Mr. Strand says, well, I guess somehow if you happen to have gotten COVID, that'll help you recover two years after the fact if you go to the parks and breathe fresh air. I only breathe fresh air every single day almost. I don't go to a park to do it, and I do it for about an hour. Well, sometimes I go to the park, but anyway. We didn't need these funds to put shade over the bleachers at the parks, put more grass on the ball diamonds and everything else to, after the supposed pandemic struck and went away to help people recover from the effects of it. So just consider this. This city staff and prior councils, they just salivate at the mouth over grant funds. They seem to actually think that it's literally money falling from heaven that just rains down into their coffers. And boy, oh, isn't it so wonderful? We got grant funds to do this and do that, you know? And it's, I could stand here for an hour and redo a list of them over the years. Don't get too bored, Kyle. I'll be done in a minute. And. Yeah, I have 2 minutes and 30 seconds left to keep going on. Isn't that terrible? Anyway, just think, every time you get slush fund money like this from the feds or from the state, you just ingrain yourselves further and further and further, because what these really are, are, it's a little puppet act. They award funds, and they say, now, this is what you have to do with these funds. And so go to it now and make this happen. So it's their agenda because it's their money. But these past councils, including this one, they're just entirely happy to jump to those agendas, grab that money, and do the feds or the states bidding, neglecting the fact the whole time that this is our tax money. It came out of our pockets, and it's circling this big round circle, coming right back around here now in this instance, and in many, many instances. And this is the kind of stuff, slush fund award, money awarding, that makes us all pay what Mr. Porter referred to as, you know, we're paying 50% of our income in taxes. Well, here's an example, boys and girls, of why you're doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, good evening, council. Scott Miller, 341 East Wilson. If I understood that correctly, this is to redo the floor in Kermit Ghee where we are able to hold events, not we being the city, but we being the public, where right now there is some pretty big divots in the floors. And when it comes to coming back from COVID, Mr. Neal, I would strongly encourage you to come to some of those events. I haven't seen any of them, but that's neither here nor there. But I'm all for that, is when people have their weddings or have their casoneras or have big public meetings there. We need to have a place that people are proud to come into and not have giant divots in the floor and trip hazards. So for this guy, I'm totally okay with this. It's a great idea, and I have a feeling that we still have some money left in the American Rescue Plan Act, that maybe we can do some things at the parks, and maybe we can have a open forum at some point, we can talk about that. But to come up and talk badly about having our community have an amazing place to have events is a little disrespectful, in my opinion. I'm all for this, and as a guy who puts on events and makes things happen as far as events, it's very well, very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Okay. I believe we have one on the phone. Caller, go ahead.
Hello, this is Renee West Delusque again. I'm glad to hear how you're spending the ARP money. I haven't seen any evidence of wasteful spending. You're spending it on things that are needed for our parks and recreation areas. And I remember there was a measure on the ballot, I think it was in 2018, to get a pool, pool center, recreation center, and there were other things for parks and rec, and it failed. And so I see the ARP money as making up for some of that money we needed to help the parks at that time, but we couldn't get the initiative passed. So I applaud your use of ARP money, and I think you're doing it constructively. And thank you for all your work and time on this.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, any other public comment? Seen none? Bring it back to council. Again, just reiterating that this is just one of the many things that we're doing in Kermit Ghee. Mr. Miller, we'll have very nice new partitions that don't fall apart either as part of the process as well. Okay, any other council comment? Seen none? Do I have a motion for approval of the proposed additional portion allocated for the banquet hall floors?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Mr. Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number eight. This is a resolution of the City of Ridgecrest City Council approving a professional services agreement to Realty Planners Group, Inc., for preparation of the City of Ridgecrest 2023, 2031 Housing Element and Authorizing Related Actions.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So it is time for us to update our housing element. So what I have for you tonight is a selection of a consultant to prepare our housing element update. We circulated an RFP to select consultants. We got two responses. There's a significant difference in the cost of the consultants. So staff selected the lower-cost option, but that option also has experience working in Kern County, so we did feel that was a significant benefit for us, because they do understand some of our concerns with state laws regarding housing. We were awarded funds from LEAP Grant, which is the local early action planning. So we already have $70,000, and we did budget in the 2023 budget. So we do have additional funds to cover the remaining amount of the consultant contract. So the resolution before you tonight is to enter into the agreement with Realty Planners Group and for the city manager to execute that agreement. Do you guys have any questions about the housing element update process or about the Realty Planners Group? No?
I don't have any questions.
I don't. I do have one correction, correction, being me. So on the resolution, the amount, 87,400, should be. Only 420. The amount, you have one zero extra, I think, right?
Oh, yeah, on the bottom, on section one. Yeah. There's an extra zero, yeah.
Sorry.
Got him.
And I also noticed at the top it says Resolution 21, so I'm going to change that to year 22, so there'll be two changes on that.
These types of errors. Just kidding, I just love, I love that you catch a zero like that. Man, what numbers. Sorry. You are the highest. Oh, the top top.
So who did the previous study? The same group or different group?
It was a different group, but I don't know who it was.
So they did not?
No, this gentleman that is the executive for this actually worked for Kern County Planning.
Okay.
And he's retired now, obviously.
Yeah, the only reason I asked is for continuity purpose, so he must be knowing what he did previously, so.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
But the key is this contractor has intimate knowledge of Kern County.
Correct. He's actually doing the.
I saw Arvin Maricopa.
He's doing Arvin currently.
I thought I saw Arvin Maricopa, there was a couple of them. Trying to remember where the list went. I saw Arvin Maricopa, I apologize. I thought there, I thought there was about like four or five that he had done, but.
Yeah, and he worked in for Kern County Planning previously.
Doc? So they'll be looking at overall housing needs as far as it states that it's for seniors, families, and workers. And so my question, I guess, is more toward the worker's side of it. So are they going to be assessing and evaluating housing needs for various level income workers?
Actually, so Kern Cog has already completed our numbers. So all of those number sets are already done for us. And so I have those numbers right now. I actually presented them to Planning Commission last month. So those are our regional housing needs allocation numbers. So for our by-income level, our total RENA allocation for the new planning period, which is 2023 to 2031, is 1,436. So the previous planning period was 2015 to 2023, and it was about 1,300. So it's only about 100 different than the previous planning year, our planning cycle. So very low income is 379 of that total. Low-income units is 241. Moderate-income units is 225, and our largest portion of the RENA number is the above moderate income units at 591.
Perfect, I wasn't expecting that.
Yeah. And so a lot of cities in the state are very challenged with the new housing because they have to rezone a lot of their commercial properties. We will not have to do that at all. In our last housing cycle, we had like 5,000 available properties for housing. So, and we've, if we met the RENA, I think we were at about 800 at the end of what we had reported. We were missing a couple of years because we didn't have any information when we transferred systems. So we still have more than enough properties to meet these. So, and that saves us money in the housing element update too, because we don't have to do a lot of that work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman? Nothing? Okay. Any member of the public have any comment?
Hi, I'm. Sir, button I need to push? Oh. I'm Skip Gorman, live in Ridgecrest. And I know this element probably bubbled up from the Planning Commission. I wished I'd have been there. I have questions. Is it called an element because it's part of the master plan? What is this part of?
The general plan.
And the general plan is a living document?
Correct.
Where different? I hope I'm asking all the right questions. Where different elements have different schedules, and they bubble up at all the right moments, and we respond adroitly, and somebody somewhere in Kern County is checking on us.
The state, yeah.
The state? Okay. And because of a lack of staff, we go to a professional services group and pay them money to upgrade to a specific format, elements like this?
Yes.
That work is generally done by outside consultants in just about every city.
I was beginning to sense that. I remember a million years ago, I guess when Dave Matthews predecessor Ray Thurm, I found that name out, was given the benediction up here, that when we upgraded the master plan, all hands on deck, we did it in a very public way, you know, broke up into little groups. This is not like this anymore. We go to professional services, let them do it.
There will be a lot of public meetings. So this is just the start. Once we get the consultant on board, then we'll have public meetings and invite the public to come out and participate and help us be part of the process.
Oh, hot dog. And I heard that in other communities, zoning gets affected. Things got to be squeezed in. In our community, I would expect when we're talking about perhaps new housing opportunities, water would be a point of discussion, the availability of water to accommodate new housing areas. You're nodding sagaciously. I'm thinking, sure, water comes up. I'd listen intently when it does. My friends, I left out a whole bunch of other questions, but I always, when something like this comes up, I look forward to an orientation, even though we're expected to know these background things, I don't go to enough of these subsidiary meetings to stay on board. Even if I learned them, I'd probably forget a good deal of it. Sorry to bother you. Thank you.
Any other public comment from the floor? Okay, I think I have one caller on the phone. Caller, go ahead.
Hello, this is Renee West Delusque. I just have a question regarding the types of housing units. Is it, I assume it's based on growth, and you have to have so many in each category? Is that how it works? And the state sets it for every jurisdiction or region?
So the way that it works is the state gives every regional council of governments sets of numbers, and then each council of government is responsible for breaking down and assigning each of their jurisdictions the numbers for that jurisdiction. So our jurisdiction is the Kern Council of Governments, and so the Kern Council of Governments assigned our numbers, and those numbers are based on growth, but they're also based on the resources that are available in the community. So the resources, so in the past, you know, it was, the resource was mostly considered land, and now resources are considered jobs and transit availability to kind of reduce the urban sprawl. So that's what the new methodology is to come up with the RENA numbers.
Okay. I think I understand it better now.
You can always send me an email to Renee and I can always talk to you more about it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other callers on the phone? I don't see any. Any other callers from the floor? Okay, we'll go and bring it back to council. Just want to just recap again for those out there that don't understand, the housing element is an important component to the general plan, but it also is a major component in our ability to bid, look for, and develop future projects. So understand, and I'm just going to have Heather go ahead and reiterate for us. I keep saying Mojave View, but is it Mojave View or Mojave Rose? I keep.
Mojave View.
Mojave View, yeah. There was a Mojave Rose at one point too, wasn't there? I don't know why. Don't know why I have Rose in my head, but I keep mixing those view and rose up. The Mojave View apartments, which are currently under construction, which qualified for that construction under our housing element based on our needs, provides how much in local infrastructure dollars?
They were awarded an Affordable Housing Sustainability Grant, which provided infrastructure funds in the amount of $6.8 million.
So these type of projects actually help to not only provide housing, needed housing like we heard on the phone today, but more importantly, they also at the same time provides infrastructure dollars for continuing to develop and improve the community.
Right.
Great. And those, all of those components come from us having a thorough, detailed, and well-constructed housing element report. Fantastic. Any other council comments? There are none. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution as revised with subtracting the zeros and the 21s?
Still moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Heather.
Good job, Heather.
Okay, next is our committee reports. We've had two committees. Did I win?
Freedom.
Oh, is that the jet?
Freedom.
Ah, I love it. I love it. I just didn't know that was a jet. Hey, I've watched too many YouTube videos when the one quake came through here, and I'm sorry, but I'm going to stop if I hear a roll. We are in the earthquake capital of California, apparently, so. Next is committee reports, infrastructure?
Yeah, you bet. I got a few notes. We talked about alternative markings, it was on the agenda. What came out of the alternative markings from a comment from the public is that Public Works Director, Mr. Reed, he's going to go back and discuss the possible quarterly painting around schools of lines. We think it's not financially viable to use any other method. We would have to invest in hardware and products that would drive the cost up exponentially. So we decided as a committee that we would, to keep that cost reasonable, explore whether it was intelligent to just do repinning over the lines around the schools. And next committee meeting, we'll have that discussion again. Let's see, the other thing we talked about, item number three, let's see, it was just, yeah, Bowman Bike Path. So the only thing that came out as we said that in the future, we would try to look at the active transportation grant, see if we can get ahold of some funds to work a bike path along the south side of Bowman. From gateway to county line. That's all I got. Mr. Rajaratnam, you have anything to add?
No. Good, thank you.
Okay, next was our Parks Recreation and Quality of Life Committee, which met yesterday. Another fun meeting. I want to reiterate at the start, as I have every other time that we've provided this report, we would love the public's participation. We had one person attend. That one person provided a good idea and an opportunity that we think is possible for the Kermit G ball fields. And we thank, you know, thank John Harper for coming out and sharing with us. I encourage the community to come out and participate in your committees because that's how information gets disseminated to the council and information opportunities can be discussed. We did have one public comment. Much of it was around the Kermit G ball fields and the things that they are looking for and some things that they're concerned with and in need of. The most important one, just some quick numbers, I know that they said they had 290 kids, their highest enrollment historically in fall ball this year. We also had 180 kids enrolled in flag football. Again, these are programs our kids are needing and using. He again had concerns about how we manage the fields and how we keep the grass up, which we continue to struggle based on us living in the desert and some other challenges. And I will say that there seems to be a strong consensus out of the committee and with Parks Department to actively look at turf solutions for all of our fields over a progressive time period. We understand that, you know, we'd love to have the ability to just go out and do all of them at once, but we understand that's not economically viable. But the progressive adjust, the progressive change to turf-based fields, we think will resolve a lot of long-term needs as well as those water concern needs. So lots of opportunity there. The other thing that was talked about, and then I'll just do two more and then I'll let you jump in there, is we had a long discussion back and forth over the, what is the date of Arbor Day or Earth Day? Which was very interesting, and this was brought forward by Mr. Blades to, you know, in regards to looking at something for Arbor Day in the future. I think that the general consensus was to look at Earth Day rather than Arbor Day, but to yes, look at something that we could build out. And some discussion occurred over kind of a year one, year two, year three, kind of how to build it out within our Parks Department to encourage something that would be like a Earth Day event at each of our parks where they were doing transplanting of trees, as well as potentially trash pickup, a way to both energize and engage our children in maintaining and beautifying the community in which they live. So we're definitely looking at those options, and thank you, Mr. Blades, for bringing that idea up. We are looking for those types of community connecting signature events, and Earth Day is a great one. Coming into April a little bit easier than March, our initial, for those of you who don't know, Arbor Day is different in California than in other states, but Earth Day seems to be generally universal. So if we tried to pick Arbor Day, it would be one of those cases where we do Arbor Day in March and then somebody else gets an Arbor Day Facebook post, you know, six months later and say, well, I thought Arbor Day already happened. No, so we looked at Earth Day as an alternative. And then the last one is on December 2nd, we have our tree lighting ceremony. We would love to have the community out. It'll begin at 4:00 PM with crafts. We're going to have crafts, character, Santa, of course, lighting the tree. And above everything else, if you had a great time at the trunk retreat or you've had a great time at one of our local events, come on out to the tree lighting and start to celebrate the holiday season with us. Scott?
Well, I think you did a good job covering most of it. We also had a little bit of discussion about the CBDG grant and putting shades up over the softball fields. The flooring, Nerissa was talking about when the flooring will be going in, so that's going to be occurring relatively shortly now, I believe in April, February?
February.
February? Okay.
Yeah, I know she's.
Yeah, so February. And so that's going to be nice to start seeing some of this, some of these projects starting to come together. And then lastly, the winter camp will be, signups for that will start here. I believe it's started now, so you, folks can get ahold of Nerissa at the, or at the parks. The camp will start on, let's see, December 26th, I believe. And so it's a great opportunity for kids to be able to do fun stuff and engage with each other and enjoy some fun activities. So I think that covered pretty much everything.
Yeah, it did. Thank you for bringing up the CDPG while I've got that opportunity. I just, just a couple other quick points. So the CDPG, which is the Community Development Block Grant, we had kind of two options on the table, and that's what the committee discussed. One was playground equipment within the Freedom Park area next to the splash pad. And the other one was shade structures on the adult softball field at Leroy Jackson. In the conversation, based on, we want to see where the citizens stand, you know, next week, we chose to push the Freedom Park project off in terms of what our hopes are to accomplish. And we pushed the softball field up because we are already working on the shade structures for the lower two fields, so it became a complimentary opportunity. And it also complements the other work that I'm sure the public is well aware of through the Clean California Grant, the fencing that's be going in there, the new shade structures, the shade, the seat and shade structure at the skate park, the new bathroom, the revised tennis courts, the walking path, the lights that are being done, and the many other community projects on our Parks Department that will be starting next year. We hope to have many of those in process within '23. And one of those, one of the, finally came to realization, which is the water tank will, is going to be finally, supply chain lovely, it took us six months to get a water tank, but it's here.
Yep.
Okay.
And the shade kind of fit the immediate need versus amount of money that we have. And so it fit the, it fit that slot pretty nicely, so. And shade in the desert is, and has been, one of the hot topics, no pun intended, but for, for, you know, the different sports activities out there, so.
Great, that's it. Okay, other committees, boards, or commissions? I know I have East Kern, I'm going to finally get up to East Kern Economic Alliance here. I think it's next week. It was in the 45-minute drive range, which was easier, and it was post-election, which was even, even much, much easier. So, East Kern Economic Alliance, anybody else have any coming up? No? Okay. City Manager Report?
I have none.
Future agenda items? Any future agenda items? Oh, boy, I have so many. What is our future? I would say that future agenda items should be a great topic of conversation on the 16th of November.
Just for council's information, Paul Early, a partner in our office, will be sitting in for the next meeting. I'm going to be out of, out of the country.
Are you preparing him for what he's walking into?
He's prepared.
Okay.
He's worked with me in City of Maureen Valley for a number of years. He was right-hand man, good guy.
Okay, just want to make sure, we can send him a link. So, Mayor and Council comments? Scott, we'll start with you and then we'll jump over to Kyle.
I just want to say kudos to everybody in the staff and the city for working so hard on improving our parks and quality of life. When COVID hit, this community hit the nation, the world, I guess, you know, decisions were made. Some we see, maybe they weren't great decisions when they were made. The getting out and getting fresh air and having a place to go and exercise and enjoy themselves is an extremely important part of mental health and part of that big picture that we saw as a post-COVID, you know, I guess you could say, you know, result. But, you know, you couldn't buy a bike in this town or on the internet because people were striving to go out and get activity outside. And, you know, the trails out in and around town were full of people out hiking. A lot of people can't, you know, travel out to these areas. And so, you know, having a place that they can, they can go and it's extremely important for this community. So I commend on everybody, I commend everybody on their, you know, participation and want to improve it.
Thank you, sir. Kyle?
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. I wanted to thank the public for coming out and especially for tuning in. The number is pretty high tonight, wasn't it? It's around?
34 was the highest.
34? Okay, that's impressive. We appreciate that kind of engagement, people tuning in. Whether it's negative or positive, you know, the feedback's always good. Your council needs to know how things are going. Also, please get out and vote. Midterm elections are always, they're important because not enough people are turning out across the country. And so please get out and vote. When you either mail your ballot in or bring it down, either one, and be nice to your poll workers. They're working very hard, they're up late. Yeah, and they're volunteers. Thank you, Ricka. Yeah, be polite. Be polite. Remember, we're a community. And I'd like to, you know, leaving this council meeting, I want to make sure I thank you, Mr. Scott Hayman, for all the work you've done, especially, especially your service on the groundwater authority. I think it's been exemplary. And as a council member, I've learned a few things from you and I appreciate that. And Mr. Bruin, I want to, I want to say I don't think I'd want anybody else doing your job, but I sure wouldn't want it. And I think you're doing an excellent job and I think you've served very well in the last two years.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. It's been a joy to work with this council. Solomon?
Yes, tag along with what Councilman Blade said, November 8th elections. You know the candidates, you know the issues, not only in Ridgecrest, national elections, which are very important. So do your due diligence, vote as per your conscience. So let's see how things will turn out. And come 16th, if the results are certified, we might at least see one new face on the council, if not three.
We'll see until December because we won't have certification by the 16th.
Oh, you will.
Yeah, we all get, we all get, we all get one more, one more show up regardless, either way.
No, we will be, we will get certification by that time.
No, not by the 16th. Kern County has told us way ahead of time.
They have 30 days to certify the election.
Okay.
I mean, we'll have a good, we'll have a good sentence, how about that?
And the 30, 30 days is actually.
Anyway, so, yeah.
Unless, unless they're counting the hanging chads, which, sorry, I have to make the bad pun joke, guys, then it should, we should have a general sentence.
Sure, yeah. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, since we're doing the Love Fest, thank you, gentlemen. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Peggy's not here, she knows how much she means to me, so. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you, it's been a joy to be in this role, and I hope that the, that we get to continue on with the momentum that we're already moving towards. It's been, it's been an interesting month. I said October, I said I've learned to dislike the 10th month of even-numbered years. And I didn't feel that way until 2020. And now I've discovered that the 10th month of even-numbered years are not very good months. And, and, and the biggest reason why I know that they're not the best months is because, you know, an old saying, opinions are like blank, everyone has one. Okay? You can fill in the blank. I wrote the editorial and I tried to figure out the best way to say it. But opinions are just that, everyone's got a right to one. The First Amendment protects it. I agree with everyone's right to say it. Everyone's got a right to their opinion, their, their take on stuff, their, their role, their, their terms. But, you know, it's funny because, you know, I remember a couple of years ago dealing with one of our citizens and just the amount of vitriol and bullying that they, you know, wanted to lay onto people. And I, and to see so many of those similar faces tonight, talking about trash and, hey, I don't like SB 1383 any more than you do, but I have an obligation to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Ridgecrest. That is the constitutional oath I took, was to preserve, protect, and to defend the Constitution on behalf of the citizens of the community that elected me. And follow the state legislative laws. We're doing that. We're doing it to the best of our abilities. And of course, Trash 2.0 got dropped on, you know? And everyone's, hey, you got a right to your opinion, everyone does. I happen to tell you the opinions are, are beneath our community. They're, they're just not who we are. This community, again, 18 years ago embraced me. I have made my, my friends, my colleagues, the people that have worked with me, this is what Ridgecrest is. And when we start doing just the level of name-calling, bullying, it's just beyond, it's just beneath us. it's just beneath us. And I guess at the end of the day, I would ask you, you know, is that who, you know, what do you want in your leadership? Do you want the leadership that understands that and recognizes people's right to speak and provides information? Or do you want? Do you want the animosity? Do you want the, the criticism, the attack, the, the assault on, on what is democracy? You know, I hated the speech tonight. I don't know how everyone heard Biden's speech tonight. It was, I mean, I hated that he used the term protecting democracy, and I'm up here using the same words. It chastises me. But the fact is that we have became so polar in our lefts and our rights that we forget about the middle. And the middle is the 30,000 people out there that I represent. And I think I speak for them, and it's been my honor to speak for them for the last two years. And sometime next week, we'll know whether that continues. My very best. I encourage everyone to get out to vote. It's your right and it's your opportunity. Have a great day. Have a great week, Ridgecrest. It's holiday season, a couple more months, and I hope to see you out at the tree lighting on the 2nd. It's holiday season. Come on. It is. It's a time of great joy. Everyone have a great evening. We are adjourned, 7:48.